Order at 7:30 PM. And I'd like to read the governor's order, as I am so required to do. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Shawshing Valley Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so by accessing the meeting link. I believe it was posted on the website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the Shawshing website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. First item of business is roll call, and I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Moffett, our new representative from Burlington.
Welcome.
Gillis, our new representative from Dorst. Congratulations to both of you. Welcome to the meeting.
Welcome.
Thank you. Looking forward to being here.
Approval of bills and payroll. We do circulate the bills and payroll. Feel free to peruse them. They're usually circulated.
Listen, I would like to, I had to tell you, I don't know if it's a motion. I believe this is reorganization, and I'd like to move on to number two on the agenda, please.
Uh, Dennis, you can, can I?
Go ahead, yes.
But the bills are still going to be circulated, so.
Circulate the bills.
They're going around and taking a look. If you're ready to grant it, please sign. I have no objection to moving reorganization per the request of Mr. Fusco.
Do I entertain that as a motion?
You can make a motion, take it out of order.
I'd like to make a motion to take it out of order, take the reorganization.
Second.
Out of order.
Your motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, what do you propose? Motion carries unanimously. We are now on the business of school committee reorganization.
Oh. Oh, sorry. Yeah, we put a nomination through. I have trouble with the audio. I'd like to, if, I don't know if anyone's said anything yet, but I'd like to nominate Patty Muse as chair.
Second it.
You have a motion in a second for Mrs. Muse.
I'd nominate Mr. Peterson.
I'll second that. Motion in a second for Mr. Peterson. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we will proceed with a roll call vote. Mr. Gettich.
Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Moffett.
I'm not staying.
Stay. Mr. Fusco.
Mrs. Gillis.
Mrs. Gillis.
Mrs. Gillis, please.
Mr. Gillis.
Mr. Peterson.
Mr. McIntyre.
Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Muse.
Mrs. Muse.
Lisa, did you vote?
No, but Mrs. Muse.
Muse. Mrs. Asbetty.
Mrs. Muse.
And I will abstain, which means Mrs. Muse is our new chair. Congratulations.
Now I have to take.
I gave you everything as treasure, but it's a recall.
Okay, approval of minutes of May 26. Thank you, everybody, by the way.
Are we doing the rest of the positions, or are we just gonna?
Patty, thank God I'm here.
Thank you.
She's so excited.
I was just like, okay, let's just.
It's a Patty show.
Go ahead.
Does anybody have a motion?
My name is Peterson, third last year. I would decline. I appreciate it.
Okay.
I'm usually going on the table.
I'm going this way.
Yeah, we can go this way. It's like the battle of Paul. It's like horse racing. We can go this way.
One Fusco. I'm second then. Any other nomination? Yeah.
Any other nominations? Anybody? All right, put it to a vote. All those in favor?
All right.
I guess.
Where's the Jerome?
Thank you.
Nine eyes and a kiss, I guess.
Any opposed?
Thanks, folks. Away we go.
Now we need, well, I guess we have to go through the whole list. I have the secretary. You mean secretary?
I nominate, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
I was gonna nominate Taryn Gillis.
Second.
Okay. Secretary?
Yes.
I second.
Anybody else? Any other nominations? Okay, and I'm putting to a vote. I didn't know.
She's a rookie. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Asbetty and Aspres.
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Says Betty, and you have been nominated for treasurer. Nancy.
Second. Maybe secretary.
Want to be the treasurer?
I can't hear you.
Oh, you have been nominated as treasurer.
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you just see me go through that audit?
Hey, you only asked one question.
You forgot to step back. You can do it.
You just have to work closely with me.
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's okay.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
No.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Can I go now, John?
I believe the business of reorganization is completed. We may now move on to the next agenda.
Approval of minutes of May 26.
Uh, come, wait a minute. Are we done with the reorg?
Yep.
You want to draw up?
Yeah. The, um, at what point would I make a comment about how to meet new members, orient them? You've all heard me say that I have felt unprepared for the job. Starting some kind of a mentor program, some kind of an orientation. I haven't met the staff. Is this the time to do that, or is that another time?
Oh, new business, right?
Do it right now, if you want to do it now.
Well, I mean, I would like, I think new people would benefit from it. Some people might not need it as much as others, but I think it should be offered to everyone to have a chance to meet. I still have yet to meet some of the administrative staff. And if Melanie hadn't taken me around for a tour, I wouldn't know half a building that I know, and I only know half of the building. I think there should be some kind of an orientation, some kind of, not a buddy system, but a mentor situation where somebody can just ask the stupid questions that I ask in open meetings. I would rather do them on a one-to-one basis rather than in open meetings. It's just something to think about. And when I was reading the professional development for new hires, that's exactly what you have. You have mentors and orientation. So why not have it for school committee?
That actually sounds good. You know, it'd be a good idea if you came back at the next meeting with this all written out.
Can't hear you.
If you wrote this all up for our next meeting.
Me?
Yeah.
Write it up? Okay.
Nancy touched base with me because I've actually said this a couple of times before, and maybe you and I can balance it off each other.
Sure. Great, thank you, Lisa.
I'd be happy to work with you on that too, Nancy.
Is this gonna be a speech?
You started it.
All right.
Who said that? Peterson? Mr. Peterson?
I didn't say anything.
Mr. Jackson.
Who?
Mr. Jackson did.
Oh. See, I was.
I'd be happy to work with you on that as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Oh, okay.
Motion, I'll make a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we got some legal bills we need, um, motions, okay?
With approval on our bill. Second. You first.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Also, approval of the Donald McAvoy case bill dated March 6. Second.
All those in favor? Does anybody have any questions or discussion?
I was going to say. That's all the associated costs with.
Yeah, it's McAvoy's.
Then my motion is actually two bills, March 6.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondence up? No correspondence? And questions from anybody? Can we actually call in? Are there any questions from the public? None? Superintendent's report.
At the last meeting, Ms. Gillis had asked me for a breakdown of the childcare information. So I put together the number down here, as you can see. Yes, sir.
Let me know when it's. Does she have a pet child?
Yes.
Does indeed.
So in looking at the childcare budget, we have 23 students down there. This is based on FY 2020. We have not finalized anything for the upcoming school year. So the, as you can see, we charge the same rate. We don't change it based on infants, toddlers, and preschools, what other child cares do. It's typically more expensive to have an infant. We leave that the same price. You do get a discount if there's a sibling, so if you have more than one child down there, we give you a little bit of a discount. And we said that, so that's our total revenues, $175,000. And for salaries, we have one director, we have three teachers, and two teaching assistants. This works with our ratios. We have an infant room that can hold between eight and nine infants. And then we have a larger room that is split between preschoolers and toddlers. There's a, like a half wall down the middle. So they do divide them a little bit, and then there's a common area for snacks and lunch. So the total salaries for those six positions, 215, we always, you know, had to count on subs. We're around kids all day long. It happens, so we have some substitutes, professional volunteers, and supplies. You know, we buy cleaning supplies, mats, and so forth, snacks for the kids. So that's about $14,000. Health dental, $127,000. Full expenses, $357,000. It does one of the loss, $181,000, and the school district funds that difference. The director's position is in the budget, and the salaries, I'm sorry, and the benefits are paid for out of the general fund. So that was asked of me, so I wanted to share. We have not taken any deposits for the new school year because we have not seen all the regulations and all the guidelines for our own school to reopen. So we've decided to hold off until we can kind of get a better game plan on what we need going forward for everybody. Okay, so I have that. Are there questions?
So this goes, should we know, so this shows we were running at a loss, but not really.
That's, that's the loss, and the school district funded. The school district funded. So there's that.
It's an amazing thing we do down there. It started, unfortunately, it started after we, yes, let's, but no, it's a great thing, and people say it's, you know.
Well, and, and I do have to say, the childcare teachers down there during all of this, they've stepped up. They've been holding, you know, they've been producing videos for their students. They've been doing what we require of our day school teachers, you know. Ellen, our director, actually went to everyone's house. She had pictures taken, like the graduations. She was sending video out to the staff. They've sent out worksheets to them. Like I said, they had Zoom calls or team meetings with their students. Assignments they've sent out, so they've really done their best to keep all the childcare students engaged, just like our day school students, you know. I think they've done a nice job there, you know. Yeah, I mean, and just so you know, Kent, it is not open to the public. It is only for our staff members to utilize. So open 184 days a year. They require to do two extra days of cleaning and prepping and curriculum writing. But it's, it's a great benefit for our teachers. It really is. Sorry.
Thank you, President. I asked for this report, and I appreciate it, Melanie. The reason I asked for it is because I, you know, you always hear things about. I know when we started this program, it was the benefit of our teaching and our staff, especially our teachers, having children, giving them the opportunity to keep our younger teachers, I'd say, teaching. Personally, I just think what we charge is too much. $8,000, I think that's too much. Competitive with other daycare people because that wasn't the purpose that we started this program. Secondly, what are our plans for, I understand that the daycare parents have been paying from March through June, correct? And are we giving them a credit for next fall for those three, four months, or are we doing that?
We had not because we continued to pay the teachers, and they were providing educational services to the students, just like they've been doing for our students in their school.
So. Buying educational services from daycare?
Yes.
I think there should be some kind of a credit. I would. Because the parents are at home with their Zooms or whatever, working with their children, their daycare gets on top of it. So I would think that this committee should consider giving those daycare parents, yeah, a credit for the fall. Yeah, I would agree with Jimmy on that. This was a benefit to the teachers, not so much something about working out a loss.
Right, but if you compare this to what it would cost you to get daycare in the, in the open market, this is about a third of the cost.
Is this a true loss?
Well, how, well, first of all, a regular daycare center doesn't operate at a loss. Okay, whatever child world or something doesn't operate at a loss. So in order to operate at a profit, they would have to be charged almost three times what, they're gonna have the same expenses. In fact, they're gonna have more expenses because these people, this is not considering rent.
Correct.
So, so, so the commercial rate would be about, would be on the order of probably $25,000.
You're right, and every one of those issues.
So what I'm saying is, I don't, I think that it's incredible benefit as it is.
That's what was established, folks, the benefits of teachers.
Right, and the cost, the cost, especially things like health insurance and stuff, it's gone way up since this was.
I just don't think that the charging from March, April, May, and June.
Most other districts have, Burlington actually has, where they credit it back. My daughter actually goes to actual program there, and that's, they get credit back for like, and actually, most day cares on the public side did things like, you know, my son saw those, so daycare entered and credit back. It's off turn.
Even though they were providing services?
In some cases, they were, but I mean, I think it's a difference. This is a little different because it's not commercial.
Right, because I think, like, Chexbury has preschool. And they continue to educate the kids the whole time, every single day, so I cannot. So I think that's the difference, where we continue to, teachers continue to reach out to these kids every single day. And they have meetings with the major professional development, so we continue to pay for the employees.
Yeah, but it's.
Not the same, but. But we require them to work along.
Fifteen years of school, are you gonna have another case of this?
Right, you know, babies, I mean, I do brush my papers.
Certainly not out of this.
Some of the teachers actually reading stories and sending videos to students, and so they, you know.
Because I'm not sure about any.
Daycare's a lot of social skills for three and four years old. Versus academic.
Here's the way that we can, I mean, if they were off three months, can we give them a month and a half back? I mean, some type of a credit?
Are people asking for?
No one has reached out to me.
Yeah, I would love to have a credit for having my kids at home last couple of months.
Were all the staff that used the daycare paid through this open end?
Yes, they were all paid.
I assume so, but I wasn't having.
No, everyone, we have not. We paid everyone.
Imagine being a teacher and trying to teach, and then having that child next to you.
And then those daycare providers would be out of a job, right?
Yeah, I mean, everybody's, everybody in every job.
Everybody was in that same problem.
Yeah.
I think they're very fortunate to be in a situation where they're, where they haven't been laid off, they continue to be paid. That's the biggest thing, you know, again, right, but I mean, if a person's averaging, the average teacher's making, you know, somewhere between $80,000 and $100,000 a year, the $8,000 expense here is not a big deal compared to somebody who just got, somebody who got laid off or whatever. So I think they're in a good position.
May I ask, what does it break down to a month for that $8,000? I mean, if we did three months, or if we did, like Lisa said, do a month and a half, how much money are we talking?
Well, they paid $8,000, it's 10 months, so it's September to June.
So it's less than $1,000 a month, so we're talking less than $2,000. I'm not.
Oh, wait, based on 180 days, how do we do that?
So they're allowed to, but kids turn us down at 184 days.
Which ones, what's one child cost?
$8,000.
One, okay, that's, 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 that's.
Any, doesn't matter, any child.
Any child, $8,000.
They don't separate it.
I got you.
Outside childcare separated, it's more of our infants.
I understand, okay.
And that it gets lower.
We're charging $8,000.
$8,000 for the first kid, $7,200 for a sibling, and for the 184 days.
Yeah, maybe this needs further study.
It does.
Well, I think we table this for now.
It's a gray area.
I would second that.
No, I motion, make a motion, we table this.
I can provide it just one. Okay, all those in favor to table it?
Aye.
Aye.
So, any opposed?
So going for, right now, normally at this time of year, you would have already collected closets for the fall.
Right, and we had not, right, we had not collected.
So.
We don't know.
So it's, it's ten minutes ago, okay, we're talking.
Where they're payable for pre-tax deductions, it's just easier not to do anything right now than to get involved in that. And we'll be able to start us to open at that point, we'll collect the money, but yes.
Perfect.
Okay. South Community Reports, financial audit. So Nancy and I, remember, call me, um, Daniel Dennis and Company, about the audit report. And good news, they had no material weakness or deficiencies, no non-compliance. Uh, no opinion, no opinion, it was a thing. So it was a perfect.
Was it all good?
It was a perfect.
That's all we wanted. It was a. It was a.
Clean audit. Okay, I recommend, okay, I recommend you go to submit.
As submitted.
As submitted. As submitted. All those in favor?
Audit will be submitted. So that goes, that goes now to, to the next step.
So now that it's approved, I'll finalize it, sign it with the auditors tomorrow, and then I forward it along to Moody's, our credit. I send it to the state, to D E N C, to the federal state. I send it to the Federal Clearing House. All of our, um, practical nursing program, financial, in Grant, we send it to everybody.
Everybody.
Everybody gets caught for the audit, so that'll go out. I need a day or two to just finalize it, we'll call me, and then it'll be submitted to everybody. They did extend it typically to by March 30, if anything go wrong. They have extended all the deadlines, so there's some.
Sounds good. Great job, Mel.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. I don't see anything but old business, but I have a question. Well, Howard, are we gone?
Come here.
But you're up. Howard. What's happening with the email situation?
Howard on?
Howard, would you like me to jump in?
Is he still there?
Well, he answered.
Howard, are you on?
Yeah, what's the question? I'm sorry.
All right, the question we asked at the last school meeting about the email situation and teachers using it.
We had scheduled a meeting last week, and the union was not available, so they requested it to be rescheduled, which we're in the process of doing.
MTA was unavailable to chat.
Okay, all right.
Do we have any write-up on that, though, because I think Mr. Peterson actually requested that at the last meeting? Just kind of the.
Can you give me a second?
I, well, it did.
Pardon me, but I thought about it.
All right, sorry, I thought it was.
All right. Howard was asked to investigate.
Yes.
In our least meeting with. Teachers, teachers, okay.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Howard.
All right, new business, professional development. Your motion was approved.
Mostly updates and changes have been in all three of these, because we've had COVID-19 over the last few months. So we kind of put language in that going forward, depending on what comes down from state, everything's that half going right now. Just, you know, Google it more online.
I just have a question. What type and kind of professional development do you think is available out there? Can you put a list together of what's available for our teachers? For zooming and.
There's a lot of that.
Depending, I see a lot of it from the state.
Specifically what we're.
Specifically, what are we going to be offering our teachers of? And how is it gonna benefit the kids?
Actually, I was gonna say something similar because I, remember when we used to get this, and we'd actually get a list of courses and stuff? So I'm looking at this going out. I can make questions, I was like, what happened?
I mean, the plan is fine, there's no. Yes. Spring, everybody was, because of what happened, everybody was told to go home and teach via Zoom. Communicating with, so I think, to be a good point, yeah, a lot of people, it's trial and error, kind of do this stuff, you know?
Absolutely.
And that's every system out there, so I know.
I mean, you know, what, what professional development is working? I mean, how is it being evaluated, and has it been evaluated, and how are we gonna give it to our teachers?
Nice.
Yes.
May I tack on to Mr. Gillis's question? Has the professional development plan been implemented or designed with the thought in mind that we're probably not gonna have anybody in the building in September? And if that's the case, how is it gonna be modified to fit the changed circumstances? And that might actually be a question that Principal may want to discuss with you, Mr. Jackson. And while we're at it, can we get a report on last year's school professional development? What was done, when it was done, what courses were offered, how many attempted?
They have a required number of hours that they have to do, I assume.
But my, I guess my question is, what? But my, I guess my question is what, how were those, how were those hours done last? What was offered, who attended? Who kept track of who attended?
No, I don't. Oh, no, I was just going to add to Mr. Gillis's point, I actually met with Heidi Lloyd today that has brought in some additional skills, USA Software, that some of our vocational programs thought outstanding, we have pilot at the bound, they rolled it out to their kids for training, and our application was one in particular. So they achieved a great, really, trying to figure out what's going to happen, so I think the report is definitely worth taking because they've been doing some really nice things. So we'll make sure that that list is put together going forward, and prior years, to Mr. Peterson's point, who's attended and what we've done the past year.
And I keep telling you, Mr. Gillis, the whole time I was, oh, when I was working at home, I did a two-hour thing for mass partnership with you every single day, so there's a ton of things out there.
What does our staff do?
Well, I know. And, yeah, I'll get that information from Mr. Gillis. The student, professional development, to student handbook. And that's the same thing, the biggest change was, we were hoping to have some information from the governor this week to help us, but unfortunately, they keep pushing it off more and more, because they have a hot piece, and they got one for all. We're hoping by the end of this week, but it keeps changing. So the language in here is, until we have, you know, more detail, we really can't update some of the information. So we updated names, states, so forth, but we left language in there that kind of covers us, that it will probably change a little bit, especially to Mr. Peterson's point. If we don't come back, we'll have to make changes, but.
Do we have any questions about it?
More approval of the school improvement plan as presented by the superintendent?
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
Same thing, put a form through the planning language about the COVID-19, doing more online learning, training for our staff.
So is there more to this book than the one page you thought? No?
The school improvement plan is one page, it's a student handbook.
Right, that's right.
So Karen Lee is actually on.
Oh, you're on that.
I lost.
Was on the council.
Don't move it, move it forward.
So moved, for approval.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
I'd get transfers.
More handles. So here, what I'm giving you tonight is, is more of a snapshot of where we're at today. So please understand, we still have about three more weeks to spend money and FY money in order for me to close down the books. So there's still a little bit more time, this number is still fluid, but what I just handed you is the plus or minus ten thousand of where we're at currently. A lot of the stuff, you know, you're aware of, you know, different movements we've made along the way, and some of them might be as simple as, you know, we might have budgeted a department share under one department, and then we ended up appointing somebody in a different department. So it might be ten thousand plus in one, negative ten in another. The biggest change, and I have given it to Mrs. Muse to vote to present as a treasurer, but now she's not my treasurer. And Nancy's online, but, um, so these are, I don't know, but these are.
Excuse me, Melanie, whenever you got a chance, is there any way that you guys can forward that stuff to myself and Nancy?
Yeah, sorry.
All right, it's all right.
Talking a little bit, so some of the things that, we don't know where our chapter seventy budget is going to be, the state has not released it, we don't think we're going to release it until July or August. So having said that, I'm trying to go through and move money and make recommendations that are going to protect us based on a cut of the money for FY twenty-one. So we anticipated six point five million for chapter seventy-one. Possibly, they're talking between a ten and a twenty percent cut. What I'm recommending, and this is something that DOR, the Department of Revenue, and DESC have strongly recommended, is that we shift our revenue source by vote from you that would decrease our chapter seventy by ten percent. And move that out of our E and D number. By having you vote that before June thirtieth, if we need these funds, we do not have the towns to approve our budget. We will still have five percent in E and D, we were certified at one point seven, we're allowed to have one point five. So our recommendation was to use a half a million to offset FY twenty-one to bring us lower thresholds. By the savings that we're going to see this year, because we haven't been here, so a lot of the shops weren't buying supplies and so forth, and we had different salary savings that, again, because we weren't here, we will still replenish E and D to get up to that five percent of the one point five million, even by making this recommendation. At this point in time, Burlington has approved our budget. Taryn and Ron were kind enough to attend the work at town meeting with me on Saturday, they approved our budget. Chokes Bay approved our budget last night, Wilmington, I believe, is Saturday. And Bedford is not having their budget, their town meeting is due to begin till July. So, like I said, DESC and DOR are recommending to the school committee to approve this before June thirtieth, because our E and D has already been certified, so by moving this now, depending what the cuts are, we'll have that flexibility. One of the transfers that I'm recommending is our OPEB. So on FY twenty-one, we have a line item for three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to fund OPEB. Mrs. Muse, that's getting, you guys heard a lot about that tonight. By funding that now, instead of October, we're still meeting our obligation to fund it, but if we get more than a ten percent in chapter seventy, this is a line item that we'll be able to use to reduce the budget versus having to do, you know, to look at salaries. So this will be a little bit of a protection there for us, that that one line item can be used, like it's still meeting our obligation to fund it, we're just funding it ahead of schedule versus the October.
Is that coming out of the available budget money, or is that coming out of money we need?
This would be coming out of the budget, so I've shown it under the line transfers, I've kind of put it in there to show you, even with all the plus and minuses, so I added two, yeah, sorry, I got a two hundred and fifty for the unemployment, because we've already seen seventy thousand dollars in unemployment charges to date. It'll be more coming. The OPEB three sixty-four in our compensated retirement, I'm suggesting to fund at two hundred and fifty, we're paying out two hundred and forty thousand this year. And we won't know what teachers intend to retire until possibly August. By contract, they don't want to spend it until August for us in order to be eligible for early retirement incentive. So typically, that's when the information comes in, but on average, we spend about two hundred and fifty thousand a year. So if we put that into the compensated trust, again, we won't have to use it out of the budget, we only budget fifty thousand. And every year, you know, a big amount of money goes up, and the salaries go up. So that's where those three recommendations are coming from, to transfer money into there. There's also a recommendation, every year, started in, I want to say, two thousand fourteen, we created a transportation trust fund. And monies that we've received over budget, we transfer into the transportation trust fund, and we use it the following year to pay down our bus costs. And so that's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. We've actually received, excuse me, our transportation second payment already, typically we only do it every year, so that's an actual number. Sometimes I don't have it to do it this early, but we actually have it tonight. So, I know it's a lot financially, but like I said, I'm, I'm not going to see you before June thirtieth. So I'm trying to give you as much information to help support us in case of cuts the next year. Like I said, it's, it's, it's one of those things that I don't know when we're going to see a number, from this date, they say July, August, I don't know the answer.
So if, part of the state's requirements require that we have more buses, because we can't have as many kids on the buses, is that where the transportation trust fund would be used? Like, is there a budget area for, all of a sudden, our transportation cost trouble?
That would have to come from other savings, so by funding the three sixty-four now, that will free up that three hundred and sixty-four thousand in the budget for that possibility. So that's kind of why, too, I'm recommending, and I think I mentioned, you know, I did talk to Mrs. Muse, our treasurer earlier, that we are trying to pre-buy items, which we typically do this time, items that you've already approved for FY twenty-one. You know, this is usually when we're buying textbooks, to make sure everything's in in the fall. So any other items that you, you know, like I said, approved, but also understand, we have been buying plexiglass, we've been buying face shields and face masks and hand sanitizers and wipes, and signs and cones, and, and we have been, you know, really looking at the PPE as well, you know, we're looking into buying keyboard covers, you know, additional headphones, equipment services, you know, so all of those as well, and there's some, you know, guidance in states, separate vendors and stuff we can use. So we are buying all of that as well. We're on a few waitlists, because there's just not enough, but we're lucky that we have relationships with the vendors down in our medical lab, our medical wing. So like, some of our pocket nerve vendors, they have it on here, so we're able to get additional face masks from them. I think we already have three thousand on site, we're ordering another four thousand tomorrow, in anticipation of, we don't know, right? And these are disposable, so when kids come in, you know, like the food service, we're looking to buy ten freestanding self-pumping hand sanitizer stations. We don't even know if they're going to be allowed in the kitchen, right? So now we've got to look into buying carts to be able to put our bags, or, we don't have the answers, but we're, we're trying to anticipate all of those. Like the plexiglass has been custom ordered for the cafeteria, that's, that's a given, we've, the salad bar, the different areas. But it's all going to be moving the next three weeks, and I won't be seeing you before then. So like I said, I know it's a lot of information, but I think by doing this will put us in a position for unknown FY twenty-one, because we don't know.
Do we need to open some gravel pad or something?
Howard, you're traveling, looking good.
Fluff, shush, shush.
It was in, so I guess about ten minutes.
Yeah.
Did we move the E and D money in February, we wrote to transfer the E and D money in February?
As part of the budget, not to transfer, as, yes, that was part of the FY twenty, one of the revenue sources, correct.
So you're asking us today to transfer.
To use an additional six fifty from E and D.
Correct.
Yes.
So is this money coming from E and D?
No.
Is it coming from unfunded other budgetary items?
Coming from budget surplus, correct, and FY twenty.
So we're not moving anything from E and D other than five hundred thousand when we vote on February?
You're adding the additional six fifty. So the total for the FY twenty-one budget, maybe the chapter seventy, the five point eight, and the E and D one point one, and then we'll still have transportation interest income, and then the balance from the five towns.
So you're asking us to move another one point four and five million?
Total, one point one, total. So I was just showing you, this is what you voted for the February, the FY twenty-one.
Yeah, I got it.
And then I'm just asking to move the revenue source, instead of coming from chapter seventy, I'm saying, if we can fund it from E and D, because we'll be over our five percent, by reducing E and D by one point one, it will still keep us to our five percent based on these other items that we're going to replenish. I'm sorry, my God.
I'm sorry. Are you keeping trash of our PPE, right, is it?
Yes.
Because it may be repressible.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I have one line item in the budget that I've been using for all the additional things that we purchased.
So Melanie, just call him here, what we voted for. February, we voted on the budget for.
Correct, FY twenty-one.
FY twenty-one. Okay, now the right to the inside, because everything, that's what I'm going on.
Because if, if we lose the revenue, and then we have to go back, and we can't cut the budget, so we've got to find other revenue.
Okay.
Now you've got to wait another six to eight months to go through an audit, get E and D certified as of June thirty, twenty. So our E and D is already certified at one point seven, we could use up to one point seven if we want, we don't want to do that.
To E and D.
Excess and deficiency, our free cash.
Free cash, thank you.
So I'm saying.
So you're basically, if I understand this, we're kind of protecting ourselves, because if you didn't do anything, we'd be, you'd be scrambling.
Right, and then you could end up going back to all five towns, asking again, and.
If you had to go in the fall, go, geez, we need more money.
But yeah, this is something that's been on the table.
Thank you, thank you.
So we're using the E and D money to offset the decrease of chapter seventy.
Correct, so, correct.
These other transfers, these other four separate transfers, is that money coming from excess?
Yes, and that's what this, this repeat, as I've given you, of over and under, yes. So on the last page, I'm actually showing you, I included it in the total of all the different line items.
So, and I'm fine with it, but my, my question would be this, how, so say the, I'm going to ask you two points. What if the chapter seventy decrease is twenty percent? We can't keep funding the deficit from E and D, and you can't keep anticipating, this year we have additional budget surplus says, because we have a significant amount of unfilled positions, and then nobody in the buildings is not, so.
Right.
Expenses weren't as anticipated, weren't as high as they were anticipating to be, so.
Right.
How long can one continue to fund, continue to fund the chapter seventy shortfall, because I don't think it's going to be cut up in a week. And I don't, personally, I don't want to continue to use E and D money to do that, and I don't want to budget so that is purposely moneyless, and I don't think that's the way to accurately budget do that, we're shooting right out. But I certainly don't think that's, long-term, is a very efficient way to count on.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just trying to, so if we cut twenty percent, that's going to be one point three nine. So that's why I'm looking at, okay, here's six fifty here, and then the three sixty-four from the OPEB, that'll be a cut. So right there, you're going to have, you know, almost a million dollars, and then it's three hundred thousand.
Honestly, I don't have any problem funding any of those accounts, I think they're all worthy accounts to fund, because somewhere, somehow, we're going to have to fund them anyway. And I think we're lucky enough this year to have the money to do it, but I certainly don't want to get in a position where we're counting on that money every year.
I agree, I agree, because we want, we wanted it five percent, we don't want to be below that, it's there for rainy days, it's there in case something happens, you know, and typically, it's capital, you know, we use it to offset the capital budget or so forth, so I agree with you. This year just happens to be, because we didn't know, unfortunately, and we still don't know what the budget's going to look like. And I. No, I'm, I'm, sorry.
Are you finished? Okay. Melanie, the R and D right, okay, is, is what?
One point seven.
It's one point seven?
Yeah, that's what we're certified at.
This is, it's one point seven. Okay, and five percent of our budget is what?
One point five, we're over, we have too much money, we're required to give back two hundred thousand dollars. That's where the half a million recommendation came in, we have to give back two hundred no matter what.
Well, we have to spend it, I'll give it back.
Well, no, over five percent, you have to give back to the town. Well, no, over five percent, you have to give back to the town.
But we won't be over five percent on June thirty.
Correct, by doing this, yes, sorry.
That's what I wanna make clear.
Oh, me too.
The six hundred and fifty, well, six fifty-four, whatever it is, uh, is that included in your one point seven? That we have right now?
Yeah, deducting the one point one would be coming off of the one point seven. And then we still have access to put back in to get us, um, back up to the, so next year, we'll be allowed to have one point six million because it will base, the five percent's based on FY twenty-one. So by doing this, we'll get back up. We'll have five percent back in the budget, back in the E and D.
Melanie, where do we stand for freshman coming in this year? Number one, three sixty?
No, um, I wanna say we'll be three fifty-seven.
Next phase, is it, we're all based on that?
I think they were all... I would move to approve, um, line item, I would move to transfer two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, from the fiscal fund operating, but it's uh, to the unemployment trust fund that was recommended by interim superintendent director Hagman.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? You in this vote?
Madam Chairman, I would also move to transfer two hundred and fifty thousand into the compensated absences trust fund, particularly buyback and early time incentives to be paid out as recommended by interim superintendent director Hagman. Money to be transferred from FY two thousand twenty.
Second.
Who was in favor?
Madam Chairman, I would also move to transfer three hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars into the OTEP trust fund. Um, said funds to be transferred from the FY two thousand twenty budget for other post-employment benefits as recommended by interim superintendent director Hagman.
Second.
Who was in favor?
Madam Chairman, lastly, I would motion to transfer, um, funds above and beyond the budget. Budget amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and four dollars are received from transportation reimbursement into the transportation trust fund, the transportation costs as recommended by interim superintendent director Hagman.
Second.
Uh, could I just make a comment? I abstain from all the money transfers because I don't hear it, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna vote on what I can hear. So I just abstain.
And I know Lisa Head's asked, yeah, if you can just get it out even that morning, you know, reading or something.
Okay, do a question. Just Brad, the speed and all this stuff, are we receiving?
I actually spent maybe fifteen minutes on the phone, I don't know. Because I said this is gonna be under you, but I just, so I did, I reviewed everything with Brad today. Yes, and then you can usually vote, so I can sum that to D E S one. Increase from some five hundred to the one point one, oh, one point one. In addition to the five hundred, yeah. You've already voted the five hundred, so yes, you could just vote the E and D six fifty.
Madam Chairman, I would move to transfer the sum of six hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and ten cents from D and D to be used in the FY twenty-one budget to offset anticipated chapter seventy reductions.
Second.
All those in favor? You in this vote, Nancy, do you abstaining?
Abstaining, yes, please.
Okay, Nancy, abstaining. Okay, so we, the financial statement and odds is report. Update on director of support services search. I know, uh...
If I could start this, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, so I could give the committee an update on this, um, I've worked with Ms. Hagman on this issue. Um, and I wanted to give you all a brief update, if you can see the screen, hopefully you can see the PowerPoint. It's a very brief PowerPoint that I shared with the committee via email this morning. Um, if we can go to the next slide, I've asked, um, folks to, uh, I've, I've created a search committee um, to assist, um, us in the process of, of searching for our director of student services. Uh, this is a process that I've followed frequently in, uh, essentially all of my work as a central office administrator over the past twenty-five years. Um, the task that the, um, search and screening committee conducts is, uh, first of all, they, uh, paper screen all candidates. They select and interview the semifinalists. Their job is to select three to five finalists, which they present to me, um, in no order. And then they are available for individual consultation with me prior to my success, my selection of a successful candidate that I will be presenting to the school committee for election. Um, the, uh, if you can go to the next slide, um, I sent out a, um, request through our email server to both, um, parents and, uh, members of the, uh, school community. I asked Melanie and Jess Cook to, um, co-chair the committee. Um, I'm sorry for all these silly, uh, things in here, I, uh, I meant to take them out. Uh, Lisa Gallagher and Mr. Gillis are serving as representatives from the school committee. Matt Bayon and Sheila Fitzpatrick and these, um, and other staff members, Angela Kyra, Bethany Keen, Nancy Sim. Uh, there's a paraprofessional representative, Joanne Brace, and then there are four parents on the committee. Um, all of the people who volunteered, with the exception of, of a few, of two, two school committee members, um, were selected for this, um, for this committee. Uh, with one exception, there was a teacher who asked to be, uh, part of the screening committee. But in their, um, application, if you will, or their email to me, they indicated a preference for a particular candidate. And I chose not to, not to include that person on the screening committee because I'm seeking people who can, who can look at this process objectively and offer me objective, uh, input. The next, uh, if we can go to the next side, um, slides, Scott, um, the timeline that we're following, uh, we posted, um, Ms. Hagman posted the, uh, position on May twenty-ninth, um, and we posted it both internally and on School Spring. Uh, Friday, June twelfth was the, uh, deadline for applications. Uh, the screening committee has met, as I understand it, and, uh, they have selected semifinalists. Um, and they are scheduled, uh, Melanie, correct me if I'm wrong, they're scheduled to conduct those semifinalist interviews and conclude them on July second. Um, and then, um, that will give me from July second, uh, which would probably, uh, be, that would give me, uh, the week of July sixth to interview finalists, to do, uh, 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 to do, uh, reference checks. Um, luckily, I have a pretty extensive network of people, um, in Massachusetts that, um, I'm sure I can check both formal and informal references. Um, and then, um, ultimately, um, I would bring a candidate, who was my recommended candidate, to the school committee for approval. Um, this would require the school committee, which I know is not your custom, this would require the school committee to meet, uh, to, uh, during, uh, you know, hopefully, um, sometime, um, in, uh, mid-July, um, to, um, hear my recommendation, to meet with my recommended, uh, candidate and, um, to vote up or down on my, uh, nomination. Um, that, um, is the process that, um, I'm planning on, on using. Um, and I wanted to share that with the committee, I also wanted to share, to thank, particularly Ms. Gallagher, who I know has been involved in the process and, um, has been an active participant. Um, I'd also perhaps, um, thank you, Scott, I think you could, uh, stop sharing the screen now, thank you. Um, I, uh, I, I don't know what the committee's availability is in mid-July. Um, so at some point in time, this evening, if possible, I'd like to try to tie a date down where, um, we could, uh, schedule perhaps a, a half hour, uh, forty-five minute meeting, uh, for the committee to, um, to meet, to hear my recommendation, um, which obviously would be shared with you prior to the meeting and you would get access to the, um, my recommended candidate's packet, um, and get to see that prior, obviously prior to the meeting. Uh, meet with the candidate and then vote up or down on my recommendation. Um, so that's the process I'm, I'm planning on following, I'm, I'd welcome, um, I, I shared this, I thought, I hope I share, I, I know I had a little trouble, uh, getting access to your emails, um, but I shared this information with the committee via email when I solicited, uh, members of the committee to, to serve on the screening committee. Um, so, uh, I, but I, I'm welcome, I'd welcome your questions, um, uh, if, and if there aren't any, uh, then, uh, I'd, I'd, we can perhaps work to select a date for a July meeting, uh, for you to, uh, act on my recommendation.
I was gonna, how many, um, candidates did you, how many people applied for the job?
Uh, I don't know, Melanie, um, can you tell us that?
Was it twenty-two? And my other suggestion was, can you suggest a date that you're thinking of, maybe like the third Tuesday or something?
I was, I was thinking of July fourteenth, which is a Tuesday. I know you have a preference for Tuesdays, but, um, we may not be able to get everyone on a, on a Tuesday. Um, we could also meet during the day, that's up to, uh, but I know a lot of you, um, are not educators, so you don't, um, have a lot of flexibility with your hours. But July, I was thinking of July, at least to start the conversation, Tuesday, July fourteenth.
Can I ask a question, um, because I actually, I was curious. Um, I know it's not on the, uh, timeline that Brad has, but, um, I have had parents reach out to me to ask me if, um, the candidates that are selected, if, uh, there's gonna be any type of open forum for parents. I know Bill Rick is actually going through this right now and they've advertised their three candidates and, um, they're gonna be doing open interviews.
And would that be open to our school committee as well?
We certainly could, um, we certainly could, uh, I'd be happy to, to arrange, uh, it would be, have to be a virtual open forum. Um, I just hired a student services director in Holliston, it's starting July first, um, and we did, we did that. That would probably push the process out a week, which, um, um, so we'd have to think about maybe, uh, moving the date out. I do wanna, I, I do wanna be very transparent, I wanna seek as much input as possible. Um, but I also think we all want to be, um, cognizant of the timeline here. Um, we have nice grade parents who are very eager, um, as incoming freshmen to get, um, their IEP result, IEPs resolved. And, um, I wanna make sure that we are, um, we are honoring that, uh, process, um, to the greatest extent possible. Um, understanding, and I, I, um, I wanna be, one of the things I haven't made clear is that, um, the screening process is not open to me. I do not know who the candidates are unless candidates have, um, reached out to me individually. Um, so I have not reviewed the packets, I don't know, um, I, that's why Ms. Hagman had to answer the question as to how many there were. Um, and, um, I, um, so, um, but I'm assuming that they are, um, that many, um, of the semifinalists that they selected, um, are probably currently working, um, and would have to give notice to their employer. So I would like to try to keep the timeline as tight as possible, um, so that we can hire, um, in as timely a manner as possible. But I'd, I'd be, I'd, I'd be more than happy to host, um, open forums. Um, what, what I've done in the past, actually using Zoom, is I had, in Holliston, I had three finalists and I had three Zoom rooms. I had a parent room, I had a staff room, and I had an administrator room. And the people kind of rotated through those three rooms, so the parents could stay in one room and the candidate come in. One candidate would come in at six, one candidate would come in at seven, one candidate would come in at eight, and you would do the same thing. Now, if we have five finalists, um, we'd have to think of, uh, something a little more creative. But, um, uh, we could, we could certainly, uh, host, it would probably be a virtual live forum, um, uh, because of, um, but I'm, I'm open to that, uh, adding that to the process as well.
So what if we did that on the fourteenth and say the school committee met, um, on the sixteenth? That would give you enough time to get your feedback from parents, administrators, right?
That would work for me.
I think there's, uh, you've done a great job in the screening committee, uh, you've got all kinds of representation. I think all of those parents and administrators and staff, I'm sure they've received input, uh, from these people.
I just think that with this type of process, like transparency is really key. And, um, I think considering what's been going on the last year or so, I think, um, and then I can be honest with you, I, I, I know Dr. Dom, sorry, Brad Jackson said that, um, uh, members of the public were all picked, but there were a few people that reached out to me that did put their names in or didn't even know about it, um, that did have some concern. So I think this would kinda put it to rest, if we could have, um, members of the public kinda chime in and ask questions of the, the candidates.
Well, I, first of all, I'd appreciate it offline, if you share me, share with me the names of people who think they, um, uh, volunteered for this committee and weren't chosen, because I, um, um, I'm, I, I'm willing to stand to be corrected, but I'm not aware of any. Um, and, uh, but I, I agree that I would, um, I do think that this is an important hire and, um, and I think, Lisa, what you're proposing is, uh, with the open forum on the fourteenth and, uh, school committee meeting on the sixteenth, um, doesn't, uh, meets both our needs, it, it, it increases the transparency and it doesn't, uh, put a significant delay in the, in the, uh, hiring process at all.
Oh, can I ask you a question, Brad? Could we, could the school committee do something on that night too? Could we be put into the rotation and then we can maybe?
The school committee, um, can, we can either, um... The school committee would have to post if you were gonna be separate, um, but you would, um, traditionally, the school, in my experience, the school committee has, um, joined the parent group. Um, so that you're not, um, interviewing the finalists individually, but that you're, um, participating as, um, community members. Because, uh, the, uh, we wanna be careful about the, uh, the process itself. So we'll, uh, we'll go with the fourteenth for a public forum and then, um, and, and the dates, uh, the specifics of that will be determined based on the number of finalists that we have. Um, and, um, and then the, um, school committee meeting on sixteenth, Thursday the sixteenth, at, uh, seven PM. Nancy, is that okay with you too?
Uh, as long as, yeah, I might even come in if I can, I might, I might be here, so that might work.
Great. Great.
No executive session, right? Request from the committee, future agenda items, anybody have any requests?
I actually have a couple things, if you don't mind. I know at the last meeting, I was actually asked to attend the MAS C conference in November, because some school commitments, I'm actually gonna see if the committee would consider either Ryan Fusco or Taryn Gillis to go down, or both. Yeah.
Are you suggesting we move Patty up and then move Taryn in?
Absolutely.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move Patty into the representative position and Taryn as the backup. Yeah, so I, I know, it might be tough for Patty. Okay, I got a couple more too. Patty was, I'm having a hard time with the audio. And also, with, along the lines of MAS C, I know that we talked about this for like the last year or two, but with the new school committee members on, I'd like to see if we can, through you Patty, get MAS C to come in and do like an orientation, and especially where Brad's coming on, on how we can work together as school committee members and along with the superintendent administration. So I want to see if Dorothy Presser or whoever the rep is could possibly come in and schedule some time for that.
Do you want to make a motion? Do you want to vote on that? Want to make a motion for that?
Do I make a motion? I mean, if I, we should have done that two years ago if that was the case. Okay. All right, so I'd like to see if we can do that. No, I'm not talking about the new member orientation. They have, they have a, how to work kind of collaboratively as a school committee. It's something that we've been talking about the last couple of years of doing, and we haven't done it. And considering we have some new members, and they have to take the new member chorus, I think we should do the whole school, I think it's a little bit what Nancy was talking about too, and coming in and not really knowing what, you know, what to do and what are places.
You moved that for us to vote on?
Yeah, so like, if I need to make a motion on that, I'll do that, to make a motion to have MAS C come in and do a workshop with us and the superintendent.
Can I, can I just ask a clarifying question? Are you talking about like a roles and responsibilities type of presentation and discussion, Lisa?
Similar to that, but I think really how to work as a school committee collaboratively. We have people that have been on there for years and people that are just coming on, and like Nancy said, you know, having the mentoring program. I think if we can kind of get MAS C to come in and talk a little bit about how we work as a town member board, and especially with you coming in, definitely gonna have a different style of working with us, as we've seen with the last couple of superintendents. I think it would be beneficial to us, and that's what we pay our dues for.
And my, my original comment was regarding Shawshin in particular, not generically, but just to get acquainted with the Shawshin protocols, and I think this would be a great combination.
The other question I had too had to do with the reorganization, reorganization of the school committee subcommittees, and I'd like to know how we're gonna do that.
Chair does that. Anybody who's interested in subcommittees, just send that to me, my email.
I just would like to, because it just seems that we have people that have been on there for several years on various committees, and if you look at the MAS C guidelines, it says that we're only supposed to be on these committees for two years and rotate. So I personally would like to see if we can really rotate these committees and get representation on these committees from each town. So if you're on, like, you know, Patty, you and I were on the curriculum subcommittee, on the budget subcommittee, I mean, we should have representation from each town if we can get, you know, however members, how many members on there.
Okay, Lisa, I'll send something out, okay?
I appreciate that.
Patty, just want to take this opportunity to put a journey to personally, a bond for all of us. Thank you, Melanie, for the job you've done. Thank you, Melanie. Two jobs, less than you a difficult situation, thank you for keeping the ship afloat. And you can go back to being business manager, and things are gonna be okay, so thank you very much.
I really appreciate that for the follow-up. Typically, anyone can carry 16 days. I have 16 on the books, I have not been able to use them, now that Brad's here, and I would like to request to carry 16 and use them this summer.
You guys keep her happy, she did a heck of a job.
She has.
Can I just tell Brad something? Brad, I got your presentation for PowerPoints, but I got it on my personal email, not on my school email. If you could send it to the school email, I'm using my Appleville tablet for that. Just so he knows.
Thank you.
Can I make one last request, if you guys don't mind? Okay, I guess not, all right, I guess we're all set, thanks.